Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the May 21st, 2019. It is 9:09. And may we have a call order.
Commissioner Farrow.
Present.
Commissioner Omero.
Present.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Present.
Vice Chair Don.
Now, if we could stand, we have Sean Murphy of the St. Institute, who is going to lead us in a meditation.
It's okay for us to sit, I think. It's okay for us to sit, I think, when it should be more relaxed, because they'll take us about three minutes. Thank you all for your service. I'd like to share a practice that has been used for centuries to foster goodwill at this time of political division. I think it's an excellent opportunity to first calm ourselves and then open our hearts to spread goodwill to those we serve. I use this bell to mark the time. And I'd like us to just begin by taking a minute or so to just relax into the breath coming and going in our bodies and to let go of what's happened before and what is to come, to just be present. Just feeling the breath coming into the body. Feeling the relaxation as it leaves. Letting go of preoccupations and judgments, thoughts of past and future, just for a minute. And then, if you feel so inclined, there's some traditional phrases that we repeat internally, imagining, sending them out to the community, and to the people we agree with and those we don't agree with. You can use any variation of these phrases that you like, but one traditional form is to just repeat silently, "May all be well." "May all be healthy." "May all people be safe." "May all be free from suffering." "May all people be well." "Safe." "Free from suffering." You can have any variation you like, just repeating yourself internally for just a minute or so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Kurt, would you please give us some of the pleasurable deeds?
That brings allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as present.
Item 2nd.
There's been a motion, a 2nd to approve the agenda, please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Item 6th is awards and recognition, a proclamation recognizing May 19th through the 25th as Emergency Medical Services Week. Shall we go downstairs or go in the basement?
We can go downstairs.
So, with us, we have Mr. Medina. Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of our Emergency Medical Services Teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services System consists of emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of our Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours in specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services Providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, it being resolved that we, the Taos County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week. So, where's the more technical?
I just wanted to thank you, Board of Commissioners, and everybody for the support of our department. I know it's been kind of a rough year for us, but, you know, these guys really do give their all to provide this, you know, the best care they can to the community and to the visitors.
Thank you.
Now, we open it up to citizens' concerns. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? You have five minutes. They're being done. Move on to approval of the May 7th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the May 7th, 2019 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
With a thank you to Tammy.
There's been a motion and a 2nd with a thank you to Tammy. Please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Next, we have a presentation from the Rocky Mountain Youth Core Learning Lab about solid waste and recycling issues, Matthew Foster and his team of students.
Thank you, good morning Commissioners, my name is Matthew Foster. I'm the Development Director at Rocky Mountain Youth Core. I am here with some students from the Learning Lab. The Learning Lab is a middle school within Rocky Mountain Youth Core. We provide enhanced emotional and social support to students who are not finding success in the normal, kind of traditional, school environment. We do everything with the students, from taking them to county commissioners' meetings, to taking them bowling, to taking them to the landfill. This semester and last semester, we've added on a curriculum to their normal academics on solid waste and recycling issues. So, we've taken them to the recycling center, the landfills. We've had some presentations from area experts to come in and visit the students and talk to them about some issues of the environmental impacts, the social impacts, the financial impacts of solid waste management and recycling. So, part of their learning experience this semester, much like last semester when we were here, is to share some of their observations and concerns and something that they learn about these issues with some of the leadership in the community. So, I'm going to turn the microphone over to them and ask them to come up and introduce themselves, say what grade they're in, and share at least one thing that they've learned about solid waste or recycling, or some of their concerns that they may have as the next generation of leaders in the community.
At this, I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Heaven, and one thing that I learned about recycling is that it is bad to burn plastic because it creates this toxic environment and stuff, and you can die from it.
My name is Lucas. One thing I learned about recycling is that it's bad for the environment if you use illegal dump sites, and...
Oh, my name is Zoe Delgado. One thing that I learned from working, where that people throw their garbage in the mountains because it was too expensive for that. It's still, it's $120 a year. There's transfer stations to transfer your trash with a fee of $10. I also learned that... That the animals and the trash is getting into the water, and that animals are getting swimming into it, and they're dying.
Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Yes.
Thanks, madam.
Officer, could you please leave the names of the students with their county clerk so she can get their spelling's name corrected?
Absolutely.
Before you leave, you do write in the air.
I'll be there.
Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Item 10A, renewal 1, amendment 3 to contract TCC 2018-16, Rollas-Royal and Anaya PC, general council contract. Item B, approval of renewal 1, amendment 1 of contract TCC 2018-56, Core Health, retaining medical services contract. Item C, approval of renewal 2 to contract TCC 2017-052, Northern Mountain Constructors Road Construction Material Contract. Item D, approval and acceptance of the State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration Capital Appropriation Project 19-D3225, the purchase and equip vehicles, including mobile data units for the county sheriff's department. Item E, approval of DWI grant amendment number 3 to adjust the amount of the line items of the DWI grant fund to comply with the reporting documents submitted to the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, local DWI program. Item F, approval and acceptance of the State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration Capital Appropriation Project 19-D3224, for the purchase and equip a body scanner for the county detention facility. Item G, approval of out-of-state travel on actual reimbursement for Susan Trujillo, county treasurer, and Paula Santistevan, chief deputy treasurer, to attend the National Association of Counties' clerks, treasurers, and finance officers in Las Vegas, Nevada, July 8th through the 12th. Item H, approval of out-of-state travel on actual reimbursement for Redmond Hill County Manager to attend the 2019 Annual Conference, National Association of Counties in Las Vegas, Clark County, Nevada, July 11th through 15th. Item M, approval of out-of-state travel on actual reimbursement for Susan Trujillo, county treasurer, to attend the 2019 Annual Conference, National Association of Counties in Las Vegas, Clark County, Nevada, July 11th through 15th. Item J, approval of resolution number 2019-23, a resolution imposing an added warrant tax for the benefit of Nelo Valle, Dejos, Serrantios, Water Sanitation District. And item K, approval of intergovernmental agreement number 20-624-4000-0096 by between county and agent and long-term services department. Commissioners, refer to the consent items. Is there any item in the wish book?
Move for approval of items A through K, Madam Chair.
2nd.
There has been a motion and a 2nd to approve the consent agenda. Kurt, please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
We move on to 11 department matters. Approval of the 2019-2020 lodgers tax grant recommendation. Ms. Valerie Rial, Metoya Chief, deputy clerk, good morning.
Good morning, all. So, we had our lodgers tax meeting a couple weeks ago. We had 22 organizations that applied, some new, some are the same. And we had a good group this year, it was really good. They were very stern and saying what had to be advertised and what was not allowed. So, what our final total came out to was $85,825. We do have $100,000 available, but we thought it would be a good idea to, if somehow the county could make a public site, something maybe in Pinyasco or Questa, since there's not really anybody posted in here for that area. So, we thought that would be great, able to do something for those areas.
Yes.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, Commissioners. What is Taos First Day?
So, that's an event where it's every first Friday, my understanding, every first Friday they do something in the plaza, with events that take place to bring out, like locals and people that are around the plaza. So, she's really trying to push that, to get that going. I guess they do that in other areas.
Okay, and then I noticed that there are at least three that did not get funded. One of them was the Kid Carson Museum, Holman Museum, the Taos Pocket guy. Is that owned by the Taos News or...?
So, that's something that was initiated to the town of Taos. They put that together, and this individual went out on her own, is trying to get it started on her own.
I see. And then, we didn't fund another day of that this year?
We did not, because...
They used our facility.
That also, and because it's, they haven't used our money in the past couple years because they have difficulties providing invoices.
Oh, okay. Okay, so then...
On that note, Madam Chair, Commissioner Omero, they were awarded last year, so as Mr. Committee said, about you for the last two years, they've not requested any money from lodgers. They've requested one from lodgers, but weren't awarded, and they were failed to submit invoices, so...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Valerie, is it your recommendation that we award the $85,825 to these groups as your committee?
Yes, yes, like I said, they did really good. They questioned them, and they made sure that what they were asking for the money was going to be used for advertising, just locally, and they are pushing it, the advertise outside because that's where money's going to come from.
With also your comment about the outlying areas, I know that Questa has a healing fields coming up, which is a really nice event, and I didn't see any advertising this year, so maybe they could participate in that because that's a really good event for the county. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to make motion that we approve the 2019-20 lodgers tax grant recommendations.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a 2nd. My quick question, can you explain why you're so psyched the remaining balance and how Questa and Pinyasco can access it if they...
So, our thoughts were that if with our money left over, it's about almost $15,000, we could work something with probably the county manager or management to see how we could put a publication together when there's some kind of event happening maybe in Pinyasco or in Questa area and get it listed somehow. Not a specific event, but something that we're making happen in the summer to bring somebody. It's just something we have to work with management to see, get some ideas.
All right, thank you, please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Thank the committee for us, please.
Next, we have item 12, county managers' report matters. Update to the county commission on various items affecting Taos County, Redmond Hill, our county manager.
Sheriff, did you join me? Good morning, Commissioner asked Sheriff Holbrook to join me at the podium. I think he has a few words, but last week, as most of you know, we did go to the governor's office to attend the Medal of Valor ceremony. It was quite an honor to see our sheriff's department recognizing SRT team and all of the way the sheriff speak today.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, Commissioners, it was quite an unexpected honor last week, during National Police Week, for the first time in actual history, the governor selected Medal of Valor honors, and our team, OSI, was honored with those medals. You know, I'm still at awe that that happened, and to hear our honorable governor's very first words being something along the lines of, "Here's an example of law enforcement doing everything right," gave us an indication in many areas, and all the burden and trouble and negativity that we went through in August and September, and media, through unfortunate citizens, forming conclusions, at least for me, kind of in a way, at least for the law. It was quite an honor, and I'm very pleased that Brent, who made, Commissioner Donald, joined us there at the grand house, and probably the highlight of that moment was when Arcana and Lucas jumped up on the marble table, had to receive this award, as seen on the picture. So, thank you, guys. It was a long journey, it was very trying times for our county and for the sheriff's office, but we did endure, and I couldn't be more proud of the team that walked in that day and now the ultimate recognition and outcome, so thank you.
And I wanted to comment, what I learned, they also awarded to the office, a superintendent, the investigative team, and they were involved in the Amaya compound because they investigate stolen vehicles, which I didn't know, any stolen vehicle or burglaries to vehicles, and they found the camper that was there, it was stolen. So, they came in specifically to investigate that.
And sticking with public safety, Dispatch was awarded $62,930 from the local government division for primary councils. So, Dominic's pretty excited about it, so we'll get four new councils, and we're going to keep one of the, we're going to keep all the old ones, but we're going to set up the fifth as to have as a backup, and also the supervisor station as well. Except Dominic's pretty excited about it.
He's easily excited.
So, two weeks ago, the week before last, we did get a letter from our PO, the New Mexico Department of Transportation is the shooter call for projects, and so the county is going to apply for this grant through DOT. The state will pay 75% to 95% of the project cost. They'll be matching for between 5% to 25%. This is part of the governor's initiative to fund more road projects. So, myself and Mr. Pacheco and Mrs. Chavas will begin working on that. Looking at, we also have a call in to see how many projects we're able to apply for. Commissioner Donald also gave us the idea of submitting for the ADA walkway at the rest area, at the gorge bridge. If the architects are available on May 28th, we're already having that special meeting to approve the budget, but if architects are available on May 28th, would you guys want to have a meeting with architects to review the design? So, we could add on to that meeting just for the architect trophy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Design, what, the sidewalks out there?
No, the interior of the building. You saw when the drawings were at 50%, so now they're at 95% to 100% done. So, they just want to bring back the final drawings that they would go out to bid.
For the...
For the old tenant works.
For the tenant works, okay. Was it still here in the gorge? I would totally agree with you, as anything to do with that place.
If I could make a couple comments, we can submit multiple projects, but they have to each be submitted individually. And regarding, like, if there's a right-of-way issue, we have to get a sign off from DOT, but we can do multiple. There's a total of $40 million to be devising between the six districts. So, we don't know how many people, groups are going to apply. It's kind of a fast track, and you've got to comply with the application. So, it would be nice, because I think we... So, it would be nice, because I think we have to vet for the, our DPO, we need to maybe have that ready to vet, because you've got to get all the sign-offs, and, but we could do multiple projects we would apply for. And it actually is only a five percent match. They drop the match down to five percent. So, that's really a good process.
So, Madam Chair, when will these funds be awarded and how will this project start?
Intend to be awarded this fall, so depending on the project, it might be, we'll get accomplished this fall.
And in any of them, are there any specific requirements that maybe we're not able to meet at this point that we need to start looking at since now to make sure that we qualify?
I haven't seen any in the letters, the call for projects. I didn't see anything that we couldn't apply, or any issues. So, also, moving on, Anissa is going to, has been tasked as Special Projects Coordinator to work on the Christmas ornaments for the tree. So, right now, what we want to do is either in June or July, we're going to pick a Saturday, and that way, the employees and their children can come in, and we'll don't know if we'll do it in this room or maybe the Ag Center, so we don't mess the carpet in here. So, we're going to figure out a day, Saturday in June or July, and make Christmas ornaments with employees and their children for the Christmas tree. Mr. Cordova, not this by, and it's at your station, so if you have to, you guys can attend. And that's all I have for you this morning.
In terms of the Christmas decorations for the national tree, Madam Chair, are there any specific themes that?
Yes, there is.
White House wants to carry?
They want to stay with the Mexico, the CSM, the old houses, the environment, the mountains, anything that has to do with Mexico.
And they have to be only?
Yeah, they have to be painted. There are certain sized ones, we're doing big ones and little ones. There's two trees.
So, there's the nine to twelve inches will go on the tree, they'll be on the west lawn of the Capitol, and then there's going to be smaller trees from the Carson, and so those will be from one to six inches, and those will be the smaller, and so those will decorate the Capitol building and different office buildings for the house and the Senate members.
Are they going to be live or?
The one they did perform was live. I saw a view that this could be. Madam Chair?
Yes.
How did you pick Grinch to be one in charge of this? That's really nice, and we need to really support that, because that's, that's a good brand for that.
Right. So, and then I did for you the draft agenda on activities, so if you haven't seen it, it is in your email, so that, those dates are subject to change, but it is three days of activities. So, take a look at your email, and we've started inquiring about the hotel block as well, so if any of you are interested in going, please let us know, so we can have a look at our minds. We will have our procurement card. There's a little bit of an issue with it, but we'll have it by that time, so.
You guys all like to go hang out with Kelly in Congress, so I guess I get to go see the tree. So, you got to pick your battles.
That's all I have for today.
Questions? All right, moving on to Commissioners' report, Matters, New Business to Be Considered at a future commission meeting. I do have one is to bring forth the ADA Transition Plan, and I have six plan, so we are in compliance with ADA. So, we've got some copies from Saturday, and other models that we'll just incorporate. So, keep us from any issues, chartering justice with DOT, not having a plan. So, I would like that on the next agenda. Are there any Commissioners' announcements?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that this chair, Diego Serranzos, we started the new water line project, Geo West of the Lower Road, that would go very close to the sewer plant, about a million and a half, I believe, funding from the state. We are also in the process of beginning a new sewer project that will go along the branches of Taos Valley, the east side of the highway, off of the Leder Road, that will go all the way up to the Taos Community Center. And then there's another line that will be established that will go from Yonka Mado, the intersection of both that goes up to Yonka Mado, past the Yonka Mado Chapel, and it'll go all the way up to the Taos County Yonka Mado Community Center, National Sewer. And so, we hope to have all of these projects done before the end of this year, again, tremendous amount of help funding from the state government, federal funding, as well as matches from Diego Serranzos, who of course are our taxpayers. And so, really looking forward to getting sewer lines established and water lines established, and we're hoping that more and more people will subscribe to the idea of connecting the water, especially in the area, in the west side of Yonka Mado. For the many years, you know, that we've had, we've suffered drought, many people have suffered from dry wells, and so this will be good for our constituents in that area.
Yes.
And thank you, Commissioner Omero. I constantly get requests from the people at the intersection of Upper Rain Chief Los and Lower Rain Chief Los in that area, because all the wells are infiltrated. The town has turned their back on, saying that they don't have the capacity, which I question, it's not that many, but if at any time you guys head north, please consider that.
We certainly, Madam Chair, Commissioner Fambro, we're certainly looking at interconnection agreement with the town of Taos for the area west of the Middle Road, we get the offer because it's two forty. There are about sixty homes in that area that we're hoping to, within the next year or so, have an agreement with the town of Taos that we could hopefully resupply sewer service to those individuals. Also looking at the areas that you mentioned, especially those areas where there's high water damage. We're pretty sure that there's a lot of infiltration going on, people are drinking water in those areas.
Right. Thank you.
Any other announcements? All right, I have announcement. You have in front of you the letter from the town regarding request to place a June agenda item on the landfill board, and it would be nice if we could go as well, and to assume recycling operations at the landfill. The town says they're losing money, they aren't charging us, so they have brought this back again, and I would like input from the commission on the best way to proceed and the manager. The letter details that the town can't carry the financial burden any longer, and social So, they are requesting that the item be on the agenda of the landfill board for June to accept either the financial or physical responsibility or both for handling recycling for the region. So, really need some input on this, and the letter concludes that hope we'll be able to come to a fair, reasonable resolution, or at least to be collectively explained to the public why recycling has been deemed to no longer be economically viable to public service. So, with that in mind, Mr. Manager, if you were able to obtain copies of their budget regarding recycling operation the last couple of years, so we could actually kind of take a look at it and maybe have our finance department analyze it, so we know where the weaknesses are, and how we might be able either to bring it on to the landfill board, or whether we want to go out on our own. I was at the plastic bag ban meeting last night, and unfortunately, the two councilmen who kind of organized the meeting could not attend because they had a budget hearing, but there was a young guy who, I guess, had a meeting with the manager of the town and said that we were underhanded, and that, this is what this guy said, that the manager said, that we were underhanded in recycling, in that we keep the high commodity things to recycle, give the town the drugs. So, I would really like that to be clarified. I did not address that issue when I spoke last night.
We didn't hear what he said about jail fees.
About who?
Jail fees.
Okay.
He's on the roll.
The landfill board meeting is June twentieth, so if we could at least have some brainstorming of how we're going to proceed.
Of course, main thing is that the market is dried up, and so you can't, you know, it's just dollars and cents. You can't get the same amount that you used to be able to get for any of those items, and so it's financial burden. I think your suggestion was a good one. It would be very nice at the June twentieth meeting to have some kind of a breakdown of the town's costs, so that we can know the, how much it costs to actually keep a recycling program alive in Taos. But it's definitely going to cost something, and the costs are going up, because the price is big going down.
I won't be very close.
All right. Item thirteen C is discussion and selection of a member and alternate of the Northern Rio Grande Heritage Board. Commissioner?
Yes, as I stated at an earlier meeting, I would like to be a member of that board, and so I hope that, and you guys will agree to that.
Madam Chair?
Mr., Madam Chair, sorry.
I'd like to set a motion, but I would like to do it with the alternate also.
Right.
So, if we could choose an alternate, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that our member and alternate to the Northern Rio Grande Heritage Area would be first Commissioner Blankenher, and the alternate be Vice Chair of the?
I'll second that motion.
Please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes. The next items that we may convene in closed session, Item A, Discussion Regarding the Legal Matter of War versus Taos County. Each matters may also be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption ten dash fifteen dash one, H seven, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation. Item B, Discussion Regarding Taos County Emergency Communications Task. These matters may also be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption ten dash fifteen dash one, H seven, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we go into closed session regarding the two items Madam Chair read into the record, and that for Item A, Chief Paul Isis join the board in the executive session, and for B, that Mr. Dominic Martinez be available for some information purposes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made to go into executive session with a second, please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes. And New Business, Decision on Proposed Changes to the Policy and Procedures for the Taos County Adult Detention Center for Settlement Agreement in the Matter Board versus Board of County Commissioners. Please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes. And New Business, Decision on Proposed Changes to the Policy and Procedures for the Taos County Adult Detention Center for Settlement Agreement in the Matter Board versus Board of County Commissioners. Please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes. And New Business, Decision on Proposed Changes to the Policy and Procedures for the Taos County Adult Detention Center for Settlement Agreement in the Matter Board versus Board of County Commissioners.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion that we accept the proposed policy and procedures change for Taos County Adult Detention Center as discussed.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
There's been a motion and a second to agree to the changes to the policy and procedures for the Taos County Adult Detention Center for Settlement Agreement in the Matter Board versus Board of County Commissioners. Please call.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenher.
Yes.
Mr. Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes. And having completed all matters, this meeting is adjourned.